All right, well, welcome everyone to the listening session this evening. My name's Adam Lincoln, I'm the interim city manager for Pasco. We've also got Eric Ferguson, the city attorney. And online helping us out tonight, we've also got Amanda Daylong and Peter Morrison, who have been our consultants with this project to establish the redistricting maps. We've also got with us interpreter services tonight, should anyone need it, we'll keep an eye for anyone who's in need. We've also got with us this evening, Councilman, or excuse me, Mayor Protem Maloney with us, council member is R. Roach as well. You're welcome to sit wherever you're comfortable with. I think the, probably the best way to handle this evening is we'll kick off with a little bit of background of the history of redistricting in Pasco. We'll have our city attorney kick that off, and then Amanda can add in anything that we're missing on the legal analysis. And then we've also got room for any question and answer that we can help provide tonight. If there's something we don't have an answer for this evening, we'll make sure that, and we'll collect that information, we'll do our research, we'll provide it back to the city council for their meeting on the 7th of November, so that when they're having the next step of the listening session, that they'll have that information provided to them, so that they can make any well-informed decisions as best they can during that, or following that meeting. So with that, I'll first open up to Mr. Ferguson.
Great, thank you. I just need about an hour to walk you through the history here. The, I'm teasing you. So, no, I just want to give you a five-minute sketch on kind of how we got here, let me move this over so they can hear me. I know I've been accused of a lot of things in life, but being quiet never was one, but just in case, put it on the record. So anyway, long and short of it is, Pasco is, as you all are probably very well aware, has had a pretty, I guess, complicated history with regard to this issue. And where we're at now is we're trying to, just to kind of give you the ending first, and then we'll kind of work our way back to it again. But essentially what we're trying to do is we're trying to comply with a new statutory requirement under RCW 29A 76020, which requires us to quote "redistrict." And so what that means is that we have to go through this process, and we have to make sure that we have these, oh, there he goes, he's getting the visual aids for me. We have to get our current districts updated based on the decennial census and the decennial census data. Now, we all know that didn't go according to plan. We had a little hiccup there, you know, with the worldwide pandemic that kind of slowed some things down, so they had to kind of make some adjustments to allow for the additional time limits to, for it to be able to comply with the decennial census. So apparently you need a degree or something to do. No, no, that's okay. So, long and short of it is, that's what we're really trying to do. We're trying to comply with that statute. And so, we're a little different, and I'll, I want to make sure that I really kind of focus on this, because I think it's really important, because I've seen some of the public comments and some of the other things, I think will be helpful. It may not satisfy everybody's particular concerns, but I think it is helpful to have more context. City Pasco is not like other jurisdictions. And what I mean, I mean, that's, let me state the obvious there, but what I mean by that with this particular issue, and the reason why is because, because we have such a complicated history with this. We started in, back in the early 2010s, really trying to address this issue, this was prior to my getting here, but the, there was a concerted effort, there was a law on the books that said that code cities such as City Pasco, who hadn't adopted a district-based system, couldn't do it if they hadn't done it, I think it was before 1998, don't quote me on that though, I'd have to read the history on that. But what it basically said was, you said you couldn't convert to a district-based system, but Pasco knew that they had a problem, because there was pretty clear evidence that candidates that, representing the Latino ethnic group, weren't able to elect candidates of their choice. So, and there was a pretty substantial amount of evidence to support that. And so, the council and the city trying to find a way to alleviate that campaigned in 2015 and 2016 legislative sessions to get that law changed. That law, we weren't, they weren't able to be successful in getting that changed. They also tried to get a, what's referred to as an attorney general opinion, which sounds kind of benign, but it's actually a pretty big deal. You have to go through a state senator or representative to be able to request that actual formal legal opinion from the attorney general's office. And we received that, and basically the outcome of that was, yeah, you're going to be in a tough spot, because you're either going to have to violate, you continue to violate federal law, or try to be in violation of the state law. So, we knew we had a problem, and that's why the City of Pasco, in conjunction with the ACLU, who had made it clear that they wanted to see the issue addressed, and that they, they felt that there was a significant violation that needed to be corrected, we were able to work together and collaborate to enter what's referred to as a partial consent decree, which is just a fancy word for agree that we've got a problem, so we can get a federal judge to help us fix it. So, under the supremacy clause of the United States Constitution, federal law obviously overrides state law. And so, when you're, when you're in a situation like that, you can use a federal court order to override a state law provision that would require you to, that wouldn't allow you to do what you're trying to do to comply with the federal law. So, anyway, long and short of it is, we go through that process, there was some disagreement between ACLU and the city about how that was going to be implemented. ACLU, they put forth that they proposed seven districts, the city put forth the six districts with one at large. Federal Judge Sukho issued a 55-page opinion, which I'd be happy to, anybody borrow if they're having trouble sleeping, it will, it's pretty exciting stuff, but it's very thorough and very explanatory about how the City of Pasco, in its situation, needed to get in guidance with the federal jurisprudence under the Voting Rights Act, under the federal law. Since then, the law, no help to us, but the law at the state level changed, so that they, we would have been able to do it much easier now, but that didn't really help us much then. And the reason why I really want to make sure that we're going over that is because that, this 55-page opinion, which the federal judge approved for our particular action, was very specific about the map and the percentages of the demographics that were approved to be in compliance with the Federal Voting Rights Act. So, in Pasco's situation, the reason why I'm taking you through all this is because I want to make sure that everybody understands that we're not just a regular jurisdiction that can just go through and say, let's tweak our districts. We don't, we don't start there. We start here with the 55-page decision, and then we work our way from that. Because what, what we, we know two things, we know, one, we were in violation of the federal law, and two, this opinion in 2017 says we now fixed it. So, we start here, and then we work our way down, and that's what's been so complicated about Pasco's situation. And I know that there's lots of folks that have felt frustrated about it, none more than me, I can assure you, because it's very difficult. This is a very difficult process that we're trying to get through, to make sure that we do both things. We comply with the new state law for redistricting, as well, at the same time, make sure that we stick to what the outcome of this decision was. The main takeaway of this decision that made it legally valid, or made the City of Pasco be in compliance with the federal law, is that we created in our, in our plan that we submitted to Judge Sukho, of the six districts, three of those districts are referred to as, what's referred to as majority-minority districts. In other words, those are districts where Latinos, voting age population would be able to, or have the ability to potentially elect candidates of their choice. So, that's really the thing, that's the starting point. We know that's, that's legal, we know we're in good shape there. So, this process that we're going through is very detailed and very complicated, to make sure that we're not, while we're trying to find ways to attribute this massive growth in the City of Pasco as well, we have to try to combine that with what we've got, with the 55-page opinion. So, anyway, with that, I'll stop talking and let us get on to the good stuff, and happy to answer any questions. Obviously, I can't give legal advice, or talk about certain things that could be detrimental to the city, but I'll certainly try my best.
Amanda, did you want to jump in a little bit and talk about the Washington State and the federal VRA a little bit, or lay any other background out?
Yeah, absolutely. So, kind of layering as, on an onion, on top of all of this, after Judge Sukho's opinion came out, for, in the last litigation, our legislature passed the Washington Voting Rights Act, which layers on top of the Federal Voting Rights Act. And so, further complicating our efforts in, in the, to comply with the redistricting statute, we also had to make sure that what our efforts are doing this time around are also compliant with the Washington VRA. Now, the Washington VRA is somewhat more protective and restricted than the federal VRA in certain aspects, but that's later, like, for instance, if the, in the burden of proof on the county, if a later lawsuit is filed. The basics of it, though, are parallel and the same as the federal VRA. So, again, we just had to make sure that all of our efforts were aligned with all three of those legal requirements while we were doing all of this, and acknowledging that the 2017 plan that had already been approved by Judge Sukho, in our approach was the, in discussions with the county, was in acknowledging the population boom that Pasco has seen since 2010, is making sure that we took an approach that was the, I think, Dr. Morrison and I called it the least change approach initially to start from, to make sure that that plan that was initially approved by the federal courts was that we could comply with that plan, and also that it would comply with the rest of the scheme of everything. You know, I think Eric summarized it really well with regards to all of the new things that have happened since Judge Sukho's opinion that have impacted our efforts this time. I understand that there's some frustrations with the timing of everything, there was just a lot of moving parts, the COVID delays on the census, as well as making sure, as I described, that in this least change scenario, that everything that we were doing was also compliant. So, and that just, while it looks simple, it does take quite a bit of time, and I can, and I'll defer to Dr. Morrison in any questions that the citizens may have for him, and he'll, he can describe that in more depth. But if there are any questions for me regarding the legal require, the legal requirements for this redistricting, redistricting plan, I'm happy to answer those right now.
Thanks, Amanda. Dr. Morrison, did you have anything that you'd like to add to the conversation as well?
Well, I have several categories of things I can add, and none of which is terribly short, but I'll just give you kind of the table of contents. I've carefully reviewed the several comments that have come in from Mr. Kennedy, Mr. Dorsey, Ms. McBurney, and then I think there was a request from a council member if we have demographic tables from our 2017 plan, I guess. So, I can touch on all those, that's kind of the table of contents. And I guess I'd like to know what's first on somebody's mind, and then I'll try to be brief. And it just, the only thing I'll need is if we can somehow get that map up, so it's more visible. I'm hesitant to touch anything on my screen for fear of getting disconnected. You can, you can shrink my picture, and I know the map is behind what I'm looking at, and if there's any way you can bring it up, because I would try to make reference there, that's good, that's good enough, that's perfect. So, tell me where you'd like me to start, or I will go in the order of the questions that were sent in from the outside, because I think that's our primary audience this evening, isn't it?
I think we can start there, and then we'll open it up if there's other questions. We do have some folks in the audience who've submitted their questions ahead of time, so let's start there, please.
Mr. Kennedy provided a very detailed memo, which made a number of comments, and all of which I considered. And one of the, sort of the central things that he asked for, is he said it would be helpful if Dr. Morrison could explain during the public meeting on November 2nd, in greater detail, how he selected the precincts that went into each of the six districts, what was his methodology rationale for specific precincts, and will the city make public the data that I've used in determining the citizen voting age population breakdown of the district? And the, his, and the answer to the question is, yes, I'm going to provide all the data that I think everyone wants to see, and it's part of a lengthy draft memo that I have in draft form now, I've been adding to, giving all the data that I have properly tabulated, and there's, it's still undergo, it still has to undergo a final quality assurance review to make sure, you know, every, every number adds up properly. There are a couple of fixes that need to be made, but nothing of any, that may have any substantial effect on anything. But I'll start out by kind of explaining in what I hope is layman's terms, how you do this stuff. We start out with basically a city that I looked at as far back as, I think, 2014, then tinkering around with it as it, as it grows and changes. And to understand to begin with that Pasco has not only, you know, grown quite substantially in population, but there has been, you know, a redistribution of population within the city. Things that were caught in a snapshot by the 2010 census had changed by 2014, when I went back and I saw that I had done something for somebody about a plan that was adopted that was already taking account of the population change, and we were using state of Washington data. And then, of course, there's a 2020 census, which is the official count of who's where, and what the standard census characteristics are. And the, the starting point for what I did was kind of identifying, so that it was completely transparent and clear, that the city wanted to have a plan like the one it had adopted before, but that was adjusted and, you know, sort of rebalanced in terms of the total populations in districts. And it wanted it done in a certain way that basically corresponded to the broad, broad concept of least change. And least change, I think, means, you know, this is the plan everybody has been using, and everybody kind of knows what district they're in, and they know where things are, and they know where they vote. And so, we don't want to reshuffle the deck and deal a new hand and say, well, let's start from scratch and do it all over again, see what kind of a plan we can build. We want to take the plan we had and say, well, where is a district got too many people? Where is a district got too few? Where are Hispanic eligible voters concentrated such that they have an opportunity to elect candidates of their choice? And that's objectively where they have a majority of the citizen voting age population. And so, these are kind of the absolutes that I started with, and they're kind of the touchstones that I would return to each time and say, am I veering away from this in some way by trying something new? But that doesn't mean that I don't have plenty of ways to try new things. And the process of doing this is something you can understand if you just think of taking, beginning with the district boundaries as they have been in your last few years, having a map of those district boundaries, just the outlines of their boundaries, and overlaying that, the original boundaries onto a map that shows where Hispanics' present-day share of the adult population stands out as very high. And that is a map that is created based on 2020 census data. So, 2020 census data can allow me to identify the heavy concentrations of Hispanics among the voting age population. That is to say, I'm looking at persons 18 and over, and they're classified as Hispanic, non-Hispanic white, non-Hispanic black, et cetera, et cetera. I'm just interested in knowing where there are these enclaves of Hispanic concentration that may have appeared in places that don't happen to be the districts where Hispanics are now heavily concentrated within the old plan. And so, fit them in. Cryon, is there some way that I can fit them? And so, through a process of error, I look at these districts, and I say, first of all, which ones have too many people, they shed some population? Which ones don't have enough people, so they could take on some population? And then, which are the districts that are, that either are or are close to being majority Hispanic among the voting age population? And how can I interchange census blocks, which you can think of as city blocks for all practical purposes? How can I interchange city blocks, or ideally whole precincts, so that I can gradually boost Hispanics' share of the eligible voters, while at the same time bringing their total populations into closer balance, so that I don't violate the plus or minus 5% rule, the 10% total deviation from ideal? And it's nothing more than just constantly switching things out, pushing the button and saying, well, add it all up now, and tell me what do I have on these critical measures? And in doing this, the normal concepts that apply are, first of all, contiguity. That means that a district cannot be made up of pieces of territory that are separate from each other, so they have to be part of a whole. And also, concepts like compactness. There's not a whole lot of compactness that you can find in some of these districts, but they're sure not as gerrymandered-looking, or failing the eyeball test as some districts that you'll see elsewhere, which are politically, you know, drawn. This is what you have, and I've tried as best I could to stay with the precinct boundaries. We've had to split some precincts. Every time you split a precinct, that creates a dollar expense for the city, and it's a, it's a headache for not only financially, but for the people involved. So, we, we try to keep precincts whole, except when we have to split them. And when I split them, it's because there's a compelling reason to. So, we end up with what you see here, and you can look at it and say, well, I, I wonder why he did this, or I wonder if he could do this, or that, or the other thing. The answer is that there's an endless process of experimenting with interchanging a census block with a few hundred people here or there, trying out new ideas. And I've received a few new ideas, which I looked at and I said, well, it sounds like an idea worth pursuing, and I looked at the map, and I say, well, that was such an obvious thing, we must have tried that at some point, because right now, it's sort of a sore thumb that stands out, and the suggestion is, well, why don't you put the sore thumb away where the rest of the hand is, so that there's no sore thumb? And I could go back and keep trying out all these ideas, but this is something that extends over several months when you're trying to tinker with these plans. What I call, it's really kind of fine-tuning them, but the basic concept that you see here is, I believe, corresponding in the essential ways with a least change map, in terms of the, the overall structure of it, even though it may look different, it looks different is because the city's population is distributed quite differently. And I noticed you've also got these two large annexation islands, which, from what I can tell, looking back at earlier maps, they were much larger. So, these things are gradually being annexed into the city, creating a situation where, one thing I want to be especially careful of, since the original plan that I drew was one that the plaintiffs that were suing the city said they could accept that plan. And so, I, I believe in sticking with the plan that the plaintiffs say they didn't want to fight, because that means you're basically saying, we don't want to have a lawsuit, there's no reason to have a lawsuit. So, I would ask you to look at this, not in terms of a strict eyeball test, and say, well, why isn't everything straight, or doesn't it, why do you have strange pieces of territory split? The answer is because there was a reason to do it, otherwise we wouldn't have split it. And in doing this plan, we, we came up with an initial recommended plan. And then we got several council members, one in particular, and we did a little bit of tinkering with a few, trying to make a change in the direction that the council member had suggested, along the south, moving a bit of blue District 5 at the bottom, kind of extending it into brown District 2. And we got about as far as we could with that, and then we had to not go any farther, because there was some kind of a problem, I don't know what it was, but there was a reason not to, not to extend any further into that district. I would point out that we have Districts 1, 2, and 6. That's going to be the brown district along the bottom, that extends all the way from the right to the left, that's number 2. District 5, which is the blue one in the upper-left, and that's District 5, District 2, and then there is District 1, which is the, I'm sorry, District 6. I've got to get the, the thing I'm trying to preserve here is Districts 1, 2, and 6. And the point that I want to make here is that if, if and when the rest of these island territory, these island annexations actually join the city, that is to say, the one on the right, it's going to have to, it's contiguous with red, it's not contiguous with blue, it is contiguous, with the purple, it is contiguous with the light blue on the left, and it's contiguous, I guess, with brown on the bottom. So, it's possible, if that gets absorbed into the city, it's possible for it to be part of any one of four districts, and not be any potential source of population that isn't very Hispanic, diluting one of the Hispanic districts. Or, if it happens to be more heavily Hispanic, it could be, in addition to that district, strengthening its Hispanic concentration. And if you look at the annexation on the left, I've got to take that into account, that could be part of either the blue or the brown. And so, either way, it, blue or brown, or it could join, I guess it would be blue or brown. So, there's a question there of, you know, which district it could go into. And what I'm trying to do is avoid a situation where, when an annexation is completed, it turns out that it dilutes the Hispanic eligible voters in some district where that district is the only choice, and a plaintiff seizes on that, is saying, well, you knew all along that was going to happen, you just set it up so that it would happen by drawing these boundaries. That, that's kind of a cynical way of looking at it, but that's an interpretation that a plaintiff could make. So, that's kind of what goes into this, and that's what I've tried to accomplish. And in the process, I've created six districts that have three, two certainly heavily majority districts for Hispanics unquestionably have, not only an opportunity, but almost a sure, a sure likelihood of being able to elect candidates of their choice. And a third district, District 2, which offers Hispanics the opportunity to elect Hispanic candidates of choice, so long as Hispanics turn out. They only need to turn out as well as anybody else does to achieve a 51.6% majority before it was 49.4. So, I think you've got a good plan here going forward, and one that should hold up as the annexations occur. And it, as far as I can tell, conforms with everything that the federal And it, as far as I can tell, conforms with everything that the Federal Voting Rights Act calls for, and Amanda is keeping a close eye on the parts of it that had to do with the Washington Voting Rights Act. So that's basically the bulk of what I have to say for the lengthy comments that I received from Mr. Kennedy. And maybe I'll stop here for a minute, and I can deal with the other comments that I got quite quickly from, I think there were, well, two others.
Thanks, Dr. Morrison. Why don't we go ahead and open it up to questions and comments? If anyone would like to address the microphone and make a comment or question, we'll do our best to answer what we can this evening, like I said, or we'll make sure that we work with staff and our consultants to provide answers to the questions as well as the questions to city councils so that they have that prior to their meeting on the seventh of November. So if there's anyone that would like to, yes, please, Mr. Kennedy.
Check. Yep, it works. Thank you very much, staff, for organizing this meeting tonight, and I appreciate the opportunity to listen to Dr. Morrison. I do have a question for Dr. Morrison. Regarding the District Two, there are a few appendages that kind of juts out north and then from District Two, and then south from District Five. Would it be possible to eliminate the appendages, Precinct 63 and 48? Add those to District Five and then add Precinct 62 to District Two to make District Two more compact and try to eliminate some of the appendages? Because right now you have sort of a wedge that goes into District Two on the west side so that a voter driving on Court Street, for example, westward would go from District Two to District Five, back to District Two. Is there a way to do that and still maintain the population deviation threshold, perhaps having to readjust some districts among the other five?
I think I can answer that by saying we'd have to take some time to see what the effects of those changes would be. Looking at the map this way, I'm sure that this was not the natural way one would want it to look to pass the eyeball test. I don't recall, you know, with each precinct, what was going on. It could well be that a precinct contained some small concentration of Hispanics that, when it is added to where it is, gives us what we want in terms of boosting the Hispanic share by maybe a tenth of a percent. And instead of making an ugly, you know, finger intruding into where those people were and connecting them, I just took the whole precinct and said, since we're trying to keep precincts whole, we'll take the precinct. The answer to any question like that is, you never know until you try it out. And I would say, the awkward look of interchanged, I mean, you know, it's obviously not a clean boundary, and there are a lot of ways you could think of making it look cleaner, almost any change would improve it. Which leads me to conclude that the reasons behind that particular, those appendages counter-intruding on each other was something that was quite important. I just don't know what it is, but this is what you go through when you spend a lot of time swapping territory in and out and saying, I need something inside that precinct, but I really would prefer to take the whole precinct to keep it whole.
And if I can just add on to Dr. Morrison's explanation, Mr. Kennedy, the definition, the legal definition of compactness under the law is not necessarily small in size or small in size as possible. It's as regular as possible while maintaining the other legal requirements. So while, again, when you look at it, it's like, there's kind of, as Dr. Morrison says, the eyeball test, and there's a bit of a, kind of a, oh, that looks kind of odd. It's as reasonable in shape as possible, it has to be taken into context in this redistricting process with all of the other requirements that are upon the city and this process under the requirements of both RCW 29A 92 as well as Section Two of the Voting Rights Act.
May I ask another question? Is that okay? Dr. Morrison, I also want to make sure I understand the Hispanic citizen voting age population for District Two in the proposed map that you've drawn. That is 51.6%. Is that correct, sir?
That is the best estimate that we can get right now from the data that are at hand. And I would say, you know, given that it's the best estimate, it'll hold water until there are better and more current data available from the American Community Survey.
And, Dr. Morrison, the current Hispanic citizen voting age population of the current District Two that was adopted in 2017, is that percentage greater or lower than 51.6%?
I don't know. I, just fifteen minutes before I went on here, I was able to retrieve something that I emailed to Amanda Daylong, and it's possible that she can look at that. I'm really not sure if that, what I have is a memo that says, this is the plan that was adopted. And I believe it said it was adopted in 2014 or something, Amanda, if I'm correct. I grabbed that out of a file that I haven't looked at in six years, just fifteen minutes before it went live. And it indicates that there were five districts, and I believe there were two of them that were majority Hispanic. I don't know what the comparative numbers were, but if you have it, Amanda, you might be able to read them. Or possibly pull it up on the screen. I don't know if you can do that.
And so what, Mr. Kennedy, what you're seeing on the screen that's being displayed there is the, and Peter, what you had sent me, I think, was from before the Judge Suko's sign-off. So what, Mr. Kennedy?
It was pretty young.
Yeah, so that was from 2015. Mr. Kennedy, what's on the screen, kind of in comparison, at least the screen that I'm looking at, that table there is the table that was attached to the signed off plan from Judge Suko that you'll see there shows the three majority-minority districts, District One, Districts One, Two, and Six, and a percentage of Hispanic-Latino C-VAP of 31.9%. And that was in, I believe that was, well, that was based on the 2010 data, and that was, and then the updates and estimates from the, along the way. And so that was the 31.9%.
Thank you. I appreciate the, oh, sorry.
That's the table on the left, is that right? Okay.
Thank you. I appreciate the answer.
Fifty-four, fifty-two, and fifty-six.
Yes, sir. So, Dr. Morrison and your colleague there, is it not delusion? Are you arguing that it is not delusion that the Hispanic citizen age voting population of District Two, which is currently 52.3%, and it goes down to 51.6% in your proposed map? Is your argument that this is not delusion?
What I'm saying is that it's not delusion in the sense that it is depriving Hispanics of the opportunity to elect candidates of their choice. And the trade-off is that what we have achieved is a much higher percentage in the two other districts, as long as it is, you know, meaningfully over 50%. The rule is 50% in one person, but once you have a majority of 52%, 53%, that is regarded as an opportunity to elect. And you'll, I can't explain, you know, why it would be that it had gone down, but it's possible that the district that was called District Number Two, when this was drawn, based on 2010 census data, and I guess it would have been a much earlier version of the American Community Survey, is now registering, you know, something different in what is District Two, and, you know, that the numbers are changed. But I would not, to answer your question, I don't think anybody would regard that as delusion in terms of what you see in the other districts.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to make comments or ask questions this evening?
Good evening. I'm Stephen Baumann. I have several, most of Mr. Kennedy's concerns are concerns that I hold. Is this on?
I can hear you.
The county just went through this process of redistricting their commissioners' districts, and I wasn't aware that you could split precincts. And so with that ability to split precincts, several areas, District Three has a unique finger that goes up in between District Four and Five, and then District Four sticks down inside of District Three there, and then, of course, District Five and District Two. And so the explanation of what compact means, we got a slightly different explanation when the county just went through this process from their bandomographer. And so I was wondering, with the ability to split precincts the way that you have, what the reason is for District Four to stick down inside of District Three, or for District Three to stick up between District Four and Five?
I think I can answer that the same way I answered it before, which is, I don't know what the reason is specifically for that unconventional alignment. I mean, it obviously is not something that you'd do if you were looking for, if you were paying attention just to compactness. It's most probably the case that there was some concentration of Hispanics within either or both precincts. And to get that concentration, which must have been meaningful enough to be worth including, I took the entire precinct rather than just the part of the precinct, which would have possibly led to a different configuration, but a much more gerrymandered look, if you see what I mean. And it would have, in the process, destroyed two precincts, which translates into, you know, a dollar cost for the city going forward. I try to underscore that these kinds of oddities, I would refer to them, are, they're not at all uncommon in places where you have several populations that are in one dimension separated from each other but are also intertwined in ways that you can't maximize concentrating them in one place without destroying all the other boundaries that exist. You have to create what, if I had done it that way, I would not have kept faith to a minimum change plan, and you would, I can assure you, have looked at the map that I drew and said, where did this crazy gerrymandered graph come from? This is ugly. This is awful. It can look a lot worse if you don't try to stick with some of the geography that you're sticking with here in terms of election or voting precincts.
Yeah, I can appreciate that to a point, but back to the other point of splitting precincts, I think Mr. Kennedy, his examples and the ones that I've given, almost all of them depict precincts that have been severed into two different council districts. Another question that I had, this map that we're looking at, does this depict the map that existed? I'm assuming it was January of 2020. Is that what we're looking at?
I'm not sure which one you're referring to. This is the...
This is the original.
Oh, okay. Yeah, that must have been one you were looking at before. The map that you were looking at before, this one, the one that we've been discussing, is the revised recommended plan. That is the latest improved map based upon input that I received from at least one, as far as I could go with dealing with the...
You're cutting out, Dr. Morrison.
The blue District Five interconnecting with the brown District Three.
Maybe have a go at that again. We lost most of what you just said.
Peter, are you using your computer audio? Are you phoning in?
I've got myself plugged into my computer. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, but you're significantly delayed. Is there, it's really delayed and garbled. Can you, there's a process for you to dial in. Could you dial in by phone?
Yes, I can do that. Tell me the number and I will dial in right away. I was not aware that this was breaking up. All right. Somebody tell me the phone number.
I think you should be able to go to the little, there's like a gray window up at the side, and it should say, computer audio, phone call, or no audio. If you highlight phone call.
Okay, I see it.
Yeah, highlight phone call, and it's going to give you the information for the
Does anybody know, is this the city, the annexed city limits today?
Sorry, one more time.
Does this depict the annexed city limits today?
No, it does not. This is as of 2020. We will address that in a few weeks.
Yeah, that was...
Sorry, there we go. Easy answer.
Yeah, that was my thought. So just, this isn't necessarily for Mr. Morrison, but for the city council that needs to make this decision. I just, having been to all of the redistricting meetings with the county and studying and trying to learn and trying to understand, this map does not depict compactness as I read in the RCWs and in the Voters' Rights Act, as I read it and understood. And to split precincts, I didn't even realize it was lawful to do, but it will provide a lot of complication, I believe, for the city and through the process. So if there's a way to at least minimize it, I mean, I can see quite a few precincts there that are split. I think that that would be helpful and help to alleviate some headache down the road for everybody from the auditor.
Can you hear me now? Okay, back to the question that you wanted me to answer.
It was answered. My question was, is if the map on the screen depicted the map that was current in the beginning of 2020? And it was confirmed that this is the 2020 map. So just the rest of my comment, to not split precincts would really help, I believe, a lot of processes, I understand them. So just something to consider. Thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Baumann.
Thank you.
Anyone else that would like to make comment or ask questions?
Do we have to state our name?
You're okay.
I'm okay, okay. Anyways, I'll just do it anyways. Leo Perelis, District Three, or so I think. I think, I really can't, I would suggest the city council to not approve this map as drawn, just like a lot of people have came up here and already said. This map just looks really irregular. It looks nothing like the original map, and I understand that, given the fact that we're growing in population. But I see a lot of, I was one of many individuals who had a lot of input back in 2015 to 16 to 17. I see a lot of... I, I see a lot of definition of stove topping, maybe not, but, and then also issues with the definition of compactness, like Mr. Baumann and Mr. Kennedy were kind of asking about. In, in like, in my precinct, 39, I, I mean, that's why I came down, because a good chunk of mine has been taken out, and I really can't even, I don't even know if I'm in the District Three anymore, or District Four, it just seems really irregular, and I just noticed that a little bit of green is actually below where I, I live. So I, I guess, I, I just, doesn't really make a whole lot of sense this time around. I think last time, we had many different options, and then we also had a lot of time for comments. I think, given this, this past week, and then saying that we have a meeting today, and then Monday, we're looking to vote on this, it's like, that's really fast, and, and I, I know a lot of city council members also expressed the same frustration, so, I mean, my suggestion is tonight is to push, put this off, I guess, if, so I do have another question, which would be, if they, we do push it off, would this not be ready for the next elections per se, or when, I mean, what is the hard date for this to be passed? If I can ask that, for the city?
Sure, good question. First of all, they won't vote on it on the, on the seventh, is my understanding, it would be, probably the, the following meeting would be the soonest that they would vote on it, which would be the fourteenth. And the fifteenth is the date that the state prescribes that it be adopted, which, again, is a relatively short timeline.
Right. So if we didn't make that fifteenth day, what would that do in this timeline?
That's a good question.
I, I just, I, I think there needs to be more time, I would like to see different options, I know, again, when we did this back in 2017, there was many options, a lot of people put a lot of input in, it, it just doesn't look right to me, like any, a lot of people I've said tonight, I see a lot of precincts that are just kind of split, it just, there's not a rhyme or reason from what I see currently. I figured with the redistricting, things would have kind of moved over more, I figured District Three would have encompassed a little bit more, you know, I guess in this place, convention place was where the cutoff was, a little bit further, but it seems like District Four came into District Three, I mean, if all the population growth is west of 68, why isn't it not going out further? And I do have, have the same concerns for Council District Two, with all this little kind of going in, and you have one precincts, District Two, and then comes over to District Six, it's just, it's not contiguous to me, again, it just doesn't really make any sense. So I, I would just suggest that we push this off and give us some other data, and, or give us more options, number one, and then number two, would be, provide us the data from 2017 in regards to the C V A P and all that stuff, so we can compare and whatnot, but, because based on the information I did saw, I did see tonight, there was a lot of change between the 2010 census and 2022, but I think we need to have all the information on the table before we make a decision that's going to affect, you know, the way we vote in district members for the next 10 years in this case. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir, Mr. Vargas.
Thank you, I believe that I am the only person here who was a member of the Franklin County Redistricting Commission, and I can tell you from experience, having served on a, on a commission that met from, say, May of last year until December, almost seven months, that you need time to look at these questions in detail, and to answer questions like you've been getting tonight. There is a lot of technical information that should be provided, people should have the opportunity to propose modifications, changes to the way these districts are drawn, and there has to be a little bit of discussion going on, and engagement of the public is very essential in all of this, so for, for you to meet at the eleventh hour, and hope to meet a November 15 deadline is really much too ambitious, I believe. You're going to have to go, go back to the drawing board and, and, and get, get some extension of time, I think, from, from the state on this, and I think, given what, what has happened with the pandemic and the effects and everything else, that it would not be unreasonable for the state to consider favorably some kind of extension to this, and allowing you time to have more of a discussion with the, with the public, and to look at, at the implications of how these districts are drawn, whether you want to split, whether, whether you need to split or not. So that's, that's, that's pretty important. I, I think what I would also suggest is that, in the background information that the, the city provides, with reference to the State Voting Rights Act, that in the criteria, you also include the very important point, that district boundaries may not be drawn or maintained in a manner that creates or perpetuates the dilution of votes of members of a protected class. I know that Mr. Kennedy made, as a reference to that, but it's not acknowledged as, as an element of the criteria that should be addressed in your background notes, and I would urge you to make that, that correction in, in the background information you provide to the public. Now, with, there's another point that I, I'm concerned about, and that is that, remember when, in 2017, in January 27, I believe it was, when Judge Suko blessed the, the agreement that the ACLU and the city had in the consent decree, that the, the judge determined that the six and one, six district-based and one at-large positions would meet the, the Federal Voting Rights Act. The following year, 2018, you had the State Voting Rights Act passed, in which it, it was highlighted as, as an opportunity for cities or jurisdictions like counties, ports, and so forth, to have a chance to look, relook this, and, and, and consider whether you want to keep that at-large positions, or whether, whether you should change it and make it district-based as well. And again, the, the Voting Rights Act, I think, encourages, encourages jurisdictions to consider having district-based elections, because there you ensure that there is no dilution of votes that, that occur. Whether you want to do this, in light of the fact that we have a, a state Voting Rights Act, and, and which may conflict with any decision meant to kept an at-large position or not, that's something that, that needs to be addressed as well, it seems to me. And who, who knows if, if the state will consider that to be compliant? And in light of what the state decides, will the federal law consider that compliant? Finally, there's another point I want to make on, on the table, could you put the tables up on population counts? It's confusing to me, I look at the table on the left, and I see a, a lot of focus given on citizens' voting age population, which is important, because in determining how much vote Hispanics, how much power, how much clout they have, you need only to look at the Hispanic C V A P, right? You look at the right, and you don't see any reference to a C V A P. You do have this percentage of Hispanics age, age 18 plus, and I suppose you, you're, you're, you're considering that to be the Hispanic C V A P, but it's not clear. And if, and if you are saying that the percentage of Hispanics is the C V A P, well, that's, that's pretty dramatic, the change, it goes from, say, on District One, from 54% to 76.3%, that's pretty dramatic. So is that, is that really what you intend to say? My suggestion is avoid this confusion and make two tables that read the same from different periods, that is, the period from 2017 to the present, and then the revised plan, but have them both make reference to a, a citizen voting age population. In other words, Table Two have a mirror what Table One looks like, but just with different numbers. Those are some comments, I know that you've got a lot of work ahead of you, thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Eric, do you want to jump in?
Yeah. Yeah, I just want to clarify, there's been a couple of things that have come up, and I just want to give a little more information, not that it'll necessarily change anything, or, or, it's not an attempt to try to persuade one way or the other, just wanted to clarify a couple of things. One thing that, that is actually happening this time, and I, I was trying to, to focus on that when we first started out, was this is the redistricting process that we're required to go, that we'll go through under 29A 76, and so this is a, is a new law, a new requirement that's requiring us to go through the decennial census numbers. It is a much different process than we went through the first time, first time that was districting, this is redistricting. So it is a, this is an opportunity to, we, and, and we have to amend these districts to comply with the decennial census, but it isn't essentially the same process that recently the county went through, and also the City of Pasco went through the first time. So that is a little bit of a distinction, not that, that necessarily makes a big difference for folks, but that is a little bit of a distinction. And, and just so you know, also, this is a process, the process that's been going on, Mr. Zabel and myself have been working with the consultants since mid 2021, so this is a very involved process, it's gone on for quite some time, it's very complicated, it, it's been something that we had hoped that we would be able to have done sooner, it didn't, it is what it is, we're trying our best to, to make sure that we get that resolved, and then, and make sure that we comply with the law, but also understanding that it's been a very complicated process, I'll just end it with that.
And, and I appreciate Mr. Vargas's comments, and I just wanted to clarify, under the Washington Voting Rights Act, there are, while there is, under the law, under Washington's law, there is a preference for the district level, the, the district level elections for local elections and local council persons, there is a provision and an allowance for what is commonly referred to as a hybrid, a hybrid scheme, which allows for district elections as well as a certain number of at-large, of, of at-large representation to be voted by the entire electorate. So an, an at-large council person who's voted in is not de facto in violation, or a plan that has an at-large position is not de facto in violation of either the Washington or the Federal Voting Rights Act, in terms of depending upon how those districts are, are apportioned and how many they, they, there are, in, in terms of ensuring that those districts do allow for the appropriate number of minority-majority districts, when looking at the entire citizen voting age population.
Amanda, can you also speak to the, the question about the ability to split precincts, and if, if that wasn't something that the, the county had done in their process, but it's, it's in the recommended map here?
Absolutely, if the, I think there's a map, and it was in Dr. Morrison's memorandum as well, that showed the street, the, the streets that were, like the street details in the city. And there is, there is a provision in the statute that does provide, and that's, again, 29A 76, and it is 070, which is boundary changes for, for precincts, and, I don't know that that's the right one, but there, in Dr. Morrison's memo, there is a deep, there is a level of detail that shows the streets, and if you, if, if one looks at that, at that map with the street level detail, while the one that just shows the precincts and the, and the larger kind of generalized precincts that we see where those are split, when you look at the ones with the, with the street detail, it does show that the, those precincts are split along continuous roadways, and so it does look odd in, in this particular format, and, but when you see the detail, it's a little less jarring to the eye, but under, under the, the law, the precinct for boundary changes when there is redistricting is permitted, and that is a part of the registration process when, when the redistrict, when the new district plan is approved.
Thanks, Amanda.
If I could just say one thing, just quickly, Amanda, the map that we're looking at right now is displaying one level of geography, which is precinct boundaries, and it's far more efficient for your GIS person to do what he has been doing, which is, he can take this rendition, and he can add in the street detail, you know, without the names, just kind of the grid look behind it, there are all sorts of layers that will give you a feel for, these are not just square blocks of territory out there, with country roads running up and down, you know, the, the edges of them, if you look at them with the street detail that I'm looking at in the hard copy, that are very heavily concentrated with streets throughout precincts, and other areas where a precinct encompasses a large piece of territory in which there is an enclave of people living in part of it, the rest of it is just all practical purposes, you know, open land, and I would suggest that you, in responding to this interest in the detail, have your GIS person add an appropriate level of street detail that will, will make clear the pattern without complicating the whole visual aspect, that's, that's what GIS departments are really good at doing.
We'll, we'll make sure that's on our redistricting website. Yes, please.
Hi, my name is Pamela Godette, I live in Precinct 102, and it's really odd to see like little rivers going through my precinct like this, like I can't even tell 102 where it is, so it seems to me, you know, I've got this little river and a little thing here and a little jack and another jog, it seems to me, anytime that you're breaking up precincts, that you ought to have a separate explanation, you know, why are you breaking up a precinct? It's where I live, so, you know, why are you doing that? Put the explanation, not just, well, we, we, you know, did this, we did that, a specific explanation of why it's broken up like that. And the second thing I'd like to agree with everyone, I think it's being done too quickly, I, I went to a number of the meetings at the city, the county about redistricting, and it, it went on for a long time, and there were multiple meetings, there were multiple venues, and I just think it's being done too quickly, thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to just underscore an issue regarding the Hispanic citizen age voting population of District Two, and I think of, that's my main concern with this map right now, there is a reduction in the H V A P, 0.7% between the 2017 version, the proposed 2022, 2022 version, and Dr. Morrison's correct, you know, the, the solution to the problem of lowering the H V A P and the possibility that Hispanics in that district may not be able to elect candidates of their choice is to increase Hispanic voter turnout, but we all know that that is a medium to long-term endeavor, and District Two is up next year, and these city council seats are up in odd years, in off-year years, with very low voter turnout, voters are not engaged as much with local elections than they are with midterms or presidential elections. So there's already built in an issue of turnout with odd years. And so my concern is that now with District Two being, the proposed District Two being 7%, 0.7% lower in H V A P, that in a, if there is racialized voting in this, this proposed District Two, that a white candidate could win, even at the expense of a Hispanic candidate who wins the Hispanic majority citizen voting age population precincts, and that would be a violation of the Washington State Voting Rights Act. So if there was, so my suggestion, my written comments, was to perhaps see if there was ways to add territory from Districts One or Six to District Two, a one or two percentage points more, which would increase that H V A P percentage, get the three districts closer together in H V A P, so that there's a little bit of a cushion that could mitigate an election or multiple elections in which there is persistent low voter turnout among Hispanic voters. And I could see a case where there could be, and there is, persistent low voting, voter turnout, so that's, that's a concern. And perhaps there's, I'm, I'm sure there is time for us to see if we could play around with the map and see if we can adjust that H V A P percentage, while also maintaining the population deviation threshold at 10% or less, so we don't violate that population deviation. My other set of comments in my written statement dealt with the process, as many have already spoken, Franklin County and the pass- As many have already spoken, Franklin County and the Pasco School Board had a months-long process, both in Spanish and in English. There was multiple versions of maps. Dr. Morrison commented during both those processes, and his analysis was very insightful and important for us, as it is tonight. But there was a long process in which citizens and residents were able to digest these maps, be able to understand this process, to understand why it's important that communities that have been historically marginalized and discriminated against have the ability to elect candidates of their choice through this district-based system. And this process the city has undertaken right now is far too compact, compressed, too quick, and there, there's just not enough time between now and the 14th to educate the public on why this is so important. What really frustrates me is that we spent, what, two months on retail cannabis? We had two information sessions in which voters and residents were able to give public comment, and yet, this issue, which is, I would argue, the most important issue, because this issue deals with how we govern ourselves as a city. All the decisions we'll make over the next 10 years that our council will make derives from the decisions we make with this map, whether it's zoning, or economic development, or public safety. And we're giving ourselves two weeks to discuss this map, to suggest changes, and to vote. We have a hard deadline on the 15th, and we may just have to do the best we can over the next two weeks. But I hope that staff and the council will begin planning post-November 15th on the next redistricting process, and create a process that is much better than this for the next round of redistricting, or else we'll go through this all over again.
Thank you for those comments.
If I could just jump in real quick. Amanda, correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't one of the concerns with regard to the, we're not allowed to look at voter turnout, because that would, to use these numbers, because that would be in violation with regard to both Washington and federal voting rights, with the idea that we can't, none of these laws can be used to favor a particular group, but that while, at the same time, they have to be sure that they have the ability to elect candidates of their choice? Is that, am I on the right track with that, or is that, is that not the case?
That is correct. So you can't look at voter turnout or political partisanship in, in formulating these maps, and then also the key term and the term that's used by the Department of Justice, and I believe the Washington State Attorney General, is opportunity to elect candidates of choice. And, and so it's not an absolute. So the, effectively, if we were to consider the need, the desire to increase voter turnout in that aspect, we would risk being in violation of the Voting Rights Act at the Washington State and the federal level.
So I had a couple, a couple more comments. It appears that there's a, in District 5, disjoint's a portion of District 3. Couple of things, I think it's unfortunate that we've been working on this process since mid-2000, or 2021, and have done it, done so somewhat of in a vacuum without the community's input. The county, as Mr. Vargas pointed out, seated a panel of representatives from the community to wrestle with this process. I think they had six maps that they, they took portions of the different maps and adjusted and came down to what, what they ended up going with. Do we know, or is there a way we can find out what are the consequences of not meeting the November 15th deadline?
Amanda, do you want to handle that, or do you want me to?
I'm looking it up right now.
I couldn't hear. Oh, gosh. So, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I'm trying to determine, I believe that there could be a suit, an injective suit filed to enforce the, the city to implement a map. I'm looking to see what the remedies are, since it's going to change.
So we're in a little bit of a weird spot here. I'm, I'm not going to advise exactly what I think could happen, obviously, because I can't put the city at risk and need to make sure that that's the case, but I can tell you that that is something that is being well thought through, and we'll make sure that we address it.
I appreciate that. I think, I think that that's, that's really important. As I watched the panel that, for the county, watched them wrestle through the process, and with a demographer, and explaining these things, you know, it was explained a little bit different tonight, what compactness is in a district. And, and, and they, they were told that they could not split precincts, and so there's different, you know, criteria that I witnessed then versus what we're, we're learning about tonight, and so, but, but we're being told we have two weeks to figure this all out, and we have one map. And I, I just think that, that we're in an unfortunate spot, and if there's a way that we can push the timeline out, unfortunate as that is, I think that that, that's something that really needs to be considered, because this is not very much time. I didn't, I didn't have planned to be here tonight until they said that this is the, one of the only opportunities that we were going to have, and, and it was such a short, short timeframe, and I think that's really unfortunate. So for the council, I think you really need to consider whether or not that this can be scooted out a little bit, and if there is a process to further engage the community in figuring some of this out. Thank you.
And I just wanted to add a comment to address the splitting of the precincts with the county's districting. So to, to address Mr. Ferguson's comments earlier, that was a, this is a little different. It's a redistricting plan, but our firm was also involved in the county, the county initial districting, and along with Dr. Morrison, and the, the issue of not splitting precincts was a little bit different and more nuanced, and so I, I understand the confusion and where you are expressing some differences there. There were just some different circumstances that were at play in that aspect than we are seeing here, where the desire to split precincts was, again, was more nuanced in what was different, in that you are able to change precincts, however, it has to be done in a particular way, and the way that there were requests to split precincts in, in the county issue was, was different.
Mr. Vargas.
Well, I must say, this, this really puzzles me, why the city would do this. If you observed how the county struggled with a similar process for several months last year, it would have dawned on you that this was not going to be an easy thing to, to address and resolve anytime soon. So it, it should have been a signal for you to get an earlier start on this, and why you delayed it until now is a mystery, I must say. Well, anyway, you've heard from many of us on that score, I won't belabor the point. I do have a question for Amanda, and that is, can you give me the RCW site for the allowance in the criteria for a hybrid or mixed electoral, mixed electoral system?
So it is built in into the, into the WVRA, so the definition within our electoral system does permit for an at-large, it does not prohibit it. The, the, most of, most of the review of it, of what an at-large system looks like, has been in case law, and so the WVRA begins at 29A-92010, and that is where the definitions come in for what an at-large election is, and where, and 29A is where our entire election code starts at, under the RCW.
Okay, because I have a copy of 29A.92.050, and I'm looking at the criteria there, and there's no mention of any allowance for hybrid systems at all, and if you're saying this is really not in here, but in a definition section, I wonder if that is really the definitive ruling on this, but if there is a more specific site where this is located, I would appreciate if you could make that available to us.
Sure. So an at-large, so the definition of an at-large election is found at 29A-92010. And that also defines, and that's subsection 1, and then subsection 2 defines district-based elections.
Any other comments or questions? If not, staff will, staff will work on answering more of the questions that were posed tonight, making sure that they're fleshed out for, for city council, and that they have the totality of the feedback that was provided this evening. Anything that was submitted online, the city council has access to already, and we'll do our best to make sure that we have answers to the questions that need to be further, further conducted in writing for, for city council. Any comments from council members this evening?
Yes, I just want to acknowledge some of the, I guess, frustrations that have been expressed about the lack of time in this for public comment. That's, I believe, shared across council, and wanting to get a draft map before our council earlier in this calendar year, so that we could have our own input into the process, as well as then open it up for public comment. I want to just, you know, the, the comments that were made have been echoed to city staff about, you know, what are the consequences of exceeding a November 15th deadline, and allowing for more public comment in that timeframe, and how does it impact, what would be the consequences if we do it? So we, we, that's to be determined, but I just want to say thank you for coming out, providing the comments and the considerations that you have this evening. And one of the other things I want to just repeat back, that I think I heard, was a lot of the concerns around splitting precincts. Sounds like splitting precincts is something that is a top concern, as well as, at least for one person, District 2, of decreasing that percentage of Hispanic voter population. So definitely heard what you have said, we'll take that into consideration. Hopefully, on next Monday meeting, we'll also get more comment from the public and in between. So Ask Pasco app is one way that you can get ahold of us and provide us any more comments that you have on this.
Great, I'll be brief. I, I hear you. I hear it loud and clear. Thank you for sharing your comments with us. I expect we'll have some more comments, both via email, written comments, as well as more comments next week. But I very much share your concerns, and especially with this short timeline, as you're, as you're bringing forward particular issues with particular districts or particular areas where we're, where we're touching on precincts, you know, it's bringing attention to stuff that I did not notice and had not seen, which is the value of a public process like this. So thank you very much for, for your comments and, and your concerns, and we will continue to do our best to, to do our job with your input. Thank you.
Thank you also to Amanda and Peter for your time this evening, and that concludes our evening meeting. Thank you.